Hi, my name's Donna Sinclair and I am running for state representative in the 18th legislative district, which is in Washington State and southwest Washington. It includes a number of communities from Camas and Waschugle on the east up to Yakolt in the center battleground parts of Ridgefield and Salmon Creek and Falida and parts of Vancouver. So it's a very large district. And I live in Waschugle. I am a history teacher at WSU Vancouver, a community historian, and I'm on the Waschugle School Board. I'm here today with Joyce Lindsey, who is a former city councilwoman from Waschugle, and we're going to be having a discussion today. The discussions that I'm doing as part of my campaign are really intended to focus on issues that have to do with the personal experience of those who live in our community, who have been engaged in governance in our community, and those who are very active in our state or are experiencing certain kinds of things right now in the midst of the COVID-19 crisis. So with that, I'm going to welcome Joyce Lindsey. It's wonderful to have you here, Joyce. You're in Bellingham now. And we'll just go ahead and get started with our discussion. We're going to hear a little bit about your background and your experience in politics and in Waschugle. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Donna. It's really nice to be here. It's been fun preparing for this because I've been thinking about political experiences of my life. And I started actively in politics when I was in my late twenties. And John Kennedy was my first vote. I became active after that in district politics and on campaigns. And I loved it. And so all my life, back and forth through various times, I've been quite active in politics. I became a fundraiser and somebody asked me, how did I become a fundraiser? And in the days that I was in politics, fundraising was having parties. And so lots of parties, you'd have a nice house, invite people and they would pay to be there. And so it was fun. Campaigns were fun. I think there was a lot of distress, but maybe not the same as these days with the consultants calling and all. I don't know that candidates ever really called for money. It seemed like everybody else asked for money, but candidates didn't so much. And then it slowly changed. Tax came along and the internet came along. So fundraising through social media is a whole different thing now than it was when I was doing it. But I think of it as really parties. And the just getting to be in the room and meeting people that are actively trying to do something about whatever we thought the problem was at that period of time. So that was where I got into it.
So how did you get involved in it, though? More specifically?
Well, I volunteered. I mean, I just volunteered and I was on campaigns. And I'll tell you, every campaign needs a good volunteer. And I was a marvel at putting up yard signs. I had a little truck in my mallet and I put up yard signs. And that's what I did for Senator Jackson on his last campaign. And he personally made me feel like he wouldn't have won the campaign if I hadn't been out there. And it was a real lesson to see the graciousness and the charm of this man who I was very insignificant on that campaign. But I felt important. And so I loved it and I loved him. And from that, I knew the campaign manager, Ron Dot Sauer, and I was asked to work on the Booth Gardner campaign. And then I became a legislative district coordinator. And you know, in campaigns, there's all these different jobs. I still put up yard signs. And I began to get into the fundraising. And after Booth was elected, I was running his campaign office, which really meant setting up events, parties, fundraising parties and keeping lists. And again, this was really before sophistication of computers. And so I just loved Booth, I mean, and the people that surrounded him. And I so it just kind of grew. And from that, then I started my own fundraising consulting business. And in 19, and I'd done some fundraising even when I was working for Booths, but then I fundraised for Patty Murray. And Patty was a miracle. We had no idea. We just wanted her to win so much. It was the year of the woman and she was running against an incumbent Senator Brock Adams that had a scandal. And we were so proud of her. We just wanted her. We had no idea how could she be. And so I think Patty is one of those politicians that has been able to grow and to broaden herself and become an outstanding senator for Washington State, as has Maria. Maria was a little different situation. I worked for Maria for a while and she had lost her congressional seat. And then she went on to run for Senate against Slade Gordon, another incumbent, and she won that seat. And so right now in Washington DC, I think that Washington State is represented by two amazing women. So I'm very proud of that part of my fundraising. And I did consulting then for a few years. And then I family situations came into play. And then I moved to Waschugle. And I had always been an observer of office holders. I had worked in Olympia for a couple of sessions, but I still was an observer. And I had went to the city council meetings and I watched a man vote against parks for Waschugle. A specific park, Hartwood Park. And I was just incensed. Waschugle is a town that I thought could use a park. I mean, and so I ran against him. It never occurred to me that I wouldn't win until election night. And then I thought, oh, my goodness, I could lose. Well, I didn't. And so I went on to be on the council and I wasn't prepared. There was so much I didn't know about city government. I had a good friend who took me around, explained to me the water and the sewers and the various structures and all the responsibilities the city has. And then it hit me, the responsibilities of local government, you on the school board, city councils. There that is the place that affects our daily life. I mean, I just was amazed that we can tax at the city. We can, I mean, we have powers in local government that I think most of us don't realize. Federal government's more glamorous. The issues are big and grand and wonderful. But I'll tell you, your city determines whether you have clean water or not. Whether you're, you know, whether your sewage systems work, whether, I mean, it's just your emergency services, the police and the fire department. So I think people should not take local government for granted. It's where it affects our daily lives. And you on the school board, you know that. You see it firsthand in our children in school.
Yeah, it's one of the things that has been really striking for me because I didn't get involved in local politics until several years ago. And so I knew this. I've studied federal policy a lot. And as you said, federal, federal, the federal level is really what a lot of people hear the most about, what they want to talk the most about. And it's actually the level that we have the least individual control over. So I find it really interesting that at the city level, the county level and the state level, there are decisions being made that impact us every single day, right down to, as you said, like where the, where the stop signs are located. Things like that. How long you sit at, sit at a stoplight. All kinds of issues that have to do with things from taxes to the kinds of classes that are taught, as you said, on the school board. So I really appreciate you bringing that up, Joyce. It's really important.
Well, local government is, and you know, there's power at local government in different ways. And we, you know, there were seven council members. And the ability to get along with people that you don't necessarily agree with. And so then you learn to build consensus. I learned on campaigns really early that because I would get mad, I would get mad and I would be all in, in the wanting to win. And after we won, sometimes those same people I were mad at that were on a different campaign would be on the same campaign with me. And that was always a jolt because then I'd have to bend fences. But I remember asking Booth Gardner one time because it was a, it was a hotly contested campaign that he won. And I was still really in campaign mode and angry. And then these people started writing him checks to come into the fold because he was going to be governor. And I said to him, when do you get over it? And he said, election day. And that has stuck with me because that is so wise to not carry the, the campaign fervor on. I mean, you have to work with people or nothing gets done. And certainly in the city council that I was on, I was in a minority. And I was in a minority politically, but I liked everybody. I mean, they were, they're nice, good people. They just didn't see things the same way I did. And so then you start working your way, coming to the, if not a compromise, at least coming to a point that you can agree on something to get, make it happen, I guess, or not happen. But it was stressing for all of us. I mean, it was a, it was a stretch. And, and as I think back, some of it was really fun and some of it was very frustrating.
Well, how do you, how do you go about building consensus? What is your approach?
I try to convince people that I'm right. That I have the truth. Well, I try to make my argument so solid that it makes common sense, you know. And, and that's, and I, and I tried not to approach it with a, an antagonistic, I'm right and you're wrong. But I did try to make it so it was common sense and obviously the way that they should go because that was the consensus I come to. I, I don't know, we laughed about it at times about our differences. We could laugh about it. That we, you know, there were, in fact, there was one council member, when we voted the same, we would just look at each other, think, oh, my goodness, how did that happen? You know, I, so, but they tried to. Everybody tries because there's a city. There's an, there's a government entity. There's something at stake on these decisions that you make for people. And so we were all trying to make it with the best information that we could bring together. And I think we did very well. I think I was on a council that was fairly productive. And there were some lean times. And I think you're going to see it at state, federal and local levels. We're going to go into some really hard decisions on financial because of the economy. The money's not going to be there. It's easier to govern when you have lots of money.
What are some of the harder decisions that you had to make? I know that's not on our list of questions, but that's kind of where this conversation is going. And I think it's an important question.
I think one of the ones that we had a lot of back and forth and talk at various times over fireworks. I wanted to ban them in the city. I didn't want them sold in the city. I wanted to ban and I had, there was a constituency that I agreed with. And so that's where I was. There were other people on the council that didn't want to ban them at all. And there were people that wanted to just make parameters. We did vote to ban them in the city. We made that vote, which was long and, you know, worked out over a period of time. And then the mayor, who was Sean Guard at the time, overrode the veto. So they were not banned in Waschugle. But I, I just, but at that time, and now this time, it's interesting, we didn't have fireworks display. At the time that we were trying to ban the fireworks, there are amazing fireworks displays that you can go to if you want to, you know, go see fireworks and hear the noise. But our neighborhood, my neighborhood during the Fourth of July was like Beirut for at least 10 days. It was just untenable.
This year?
Not this year because I haven't been there for two years.
Oh, you mean in Waschugle. You mean in Waschugle?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, no. Up in Bellingham, it's, it's very quiet. But I don't know what's happened in Waschugle since then, but I know the parameters have changed. I think that was a hard decision. We also had hard decisions about trying to discuss about whether we would tax license plates. The cities have, cities have different avenues to them for fun, you know, to solicit to get funds. And we could put a tab fee and we went back and forth on that a long time. So there, you know, it's, and it's revenue. How do you get enough revenue and at the same time, don't hurt people that don't have money? And you, I mean, you're in other people's pockets and that's really hard to, to do, knowing that money is hard for people. They work hard for that and you're spending it. So you've got to make sure you're spending it on something that's going to benefit everybody in the city and you hope equally.
Well, what are some of your biggest successes in Waschugle? I mean, I'm aware of some of them, but what do you, what do you consider your biggest successes?
I think as I look back at my time in Waschugle, my personal success was working with, well, it was with parks and with some good friends and starting to bring public art into Waschugle. Suzanne Grover was with the city and she had started some through the Parks Department of the Elements. And Jan Ferguson was there and Jan and I became kind of buddies. And at that point, I decided to raise money for the dog, Seaman. And so I did that and kind of, kind of at the same time, we were forming an art committee. And so the three of us started the arts committee and then people began to join. And we got such wonderful people to join with us and all. So I think bringing public art to Waschugle was what I feel is the most satisfying to me. I, I grew up in Denver where there was lots of, lots of public art. And when I got to Seattle and there wasn't any, and then in Waschugle, it was like, oh, my goodness. I mean, there's nothing. And, and you know, and so I think that public art is very, very important. And I'm, I'm pleased with that in my part to do that. I think it's made a difference to the city.
Well, you really started the Waschugle Arts and Culture Alliance, didn't you?
Well, it was, it was me and Jan Ferguson and Suzanne Grover, the three of us sat down and did it. And, and we were all coming at it a little bit differently, but I'm the fundraiser. That, I mean, I can raise money. And I found people that were willing to support the dog. I, I can't, I just can't tell you how much support I got for that. And I just, it just kind of like made it possible that people were willing to put money into that and trust me with it. And so we had, I had been running that money through the parks of Vancouver because I needed a nonprofit so that when they gave money, they could have a tax write-off. And so the three of us, then we decided we would do the arts, we would make a nonprofit so that when we raised money, the money could go directly to us and our projects. And so we did that. And then several different things came together, but then I raised money for the second dog. And then the money for the mural. And for both the Forever Faithful Dog and the mural, we got grants and we had help. And I just want to say Burlington Northern gave us money for all three, for the two dogs in the mural. So I thought, I always thought that was nice. And anyway, so I'm a fundraiser. I know how to go find money.
Well, and for those who don't know, the dog, Seaman, is the dog, it's a statue of the dog who was with Lewis and Clark when they came here in 1805, 1806. So when they traveled through. And it's in, it's in the heart of the square in Waschugle. And then Forever Faithful, that was quite an experience, wasn't it, Joyce? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, I wanted a dog in front of the police station. I just thought it was important and I wanted, I wanted a German Shepherd or a police, you know, a canine dog. Anyway, I've always liked Waschugle Police Department. I just liked, I liked the chief. I liked the guys, I liked the women. I liked them. And so I wanted to do a dog there. And I kept looking around. And then I found this woman down in California, Susan Bahari. And she is an amazing sculptress. And she does, I mean, she does dog sculptures all over the world for, I mean, well, at least Europe and war dogs and different things. And I talked to her and I talked to her quite a bit before we could strike a deal. Because there was, I knew there was a limit on how much I could raise. And there was a limit on, on her price. So we finally hit a price that would work. And she made the dog. It's a Belgian Malinois. And I think it's a beautiful sculpture. And so a friend of mine went down to California and we picked the dog up from her studio. So we wouldn't have, I mean, we had a trip, but then we didn't have to pay for the packing because shipping a dog is great. And Suzanne Grover with the city, she got the, we got a piece of assault that was laying around someplace in the city for the pedestal for the dog. And yeah, I mean, I, that was, that was an experience. And I know just the other day, I, well, it's been a bit now, but Susan Bahari did the sculpture for the Daddy Bush Museum in Texas of his care dog. So I mean, she is an amazing sculptress. And, but so is Heather, Heather Soderbergh Green, who did Seaman. And she has a lot of sculpture and she did the bear that is there. So these sculptures, it's just, it's nice. It's really nice. And I think it's good to have these in Waschugle.
Well, and the, the value of public art in Waschugle, I think we can't overstate it. It's really, for me, that's part of what's so compelling about the city, including the mural, the White Wing mural. So that's kind of your coup de grace before you left town was to get that mural put into place. Can you talk about that?
Well, I, a lot of my thoughts came from Roger Daniels. Roger and I had walked every now and then. We'd run into each other on the diker someplace. And Roger's history of our area is without, I mean, it's amazing. And he, he started talking about White Wing. And you know, he had talked about Lewis and Clark, who I wasn't interested in Lewis and Clark. I was interested in the dog, but not Lewis and Clark. But then he started talking about White Wing. And this woman, this White Wing, this mother of Waschugle, this Indian girl, Cascade Tribe, I think is where she was from, just kind of crept into my heart and I couldn't quit thinking about her. And I tried to find her tombstone. It's not out there. She doesn't have a gravestone. Her family is there. Her husband has one. It's been broken. And I thought that there should be a memorial or something for her in Waschugle. And so I talked to Greg Robinson, who, you know, did the Headman sculpture over in Parkersville Landing, and asked him about a muralist. And he said, Toma Villa. And I just fell in love with Toma. And he came and we had dinner and we looked at that wall. And he got a vision too. And so it, yeah, so that was just, I think it's beautiful. It's a tribute to White Wing. It's Native American art, which I think is really appropriate for Waschugle. I would like to see a stone, a bird, a bird, a gravestone for, for Betsy White Wing out in the Pioneer Cemetery because, I mean, it's an amazing history and you probably know it much better than I. I just find these little tidbits that throw me and go with it. But the mural is lovely.
Yeah, it really is. And I, and I love, I also love at Parker's Landing or Parkersville Park, the, the statue of the coyote that Greg Robinson did and the Taiyi stone that's next to it. And then walking down to the waterfront by Pendleton, there's other murals and, and the replicas of petroglyphs in the tunnel there. And I appreciate that it, it remains, the native presence remains in Waschugle. And I think Betsy Ah or White Wing is one of the really important people here. Because for me, as someone who studied native history and native women, she really represents the kind of practical choices that native women made in order to stay in place, right? So she's a transitional person who is native, but also became a leader in Waschugle, which is as a woman. Which is kind of, you know, I didn't ask you about this, but because we kind of did an overview. But if you're, if you're willing, I'd love to hear a little more about the year of the woman, 1992. I don't know if, if other, if everyone is aware of that who's watching this, probably your friends are and many of my friends are. But if they're younger people who are watching it, they may not really know what that was like.
Yeah, 1992 was quote, the year of the woman. And I worked, after the primary, I went to work on, I wasn't sure in that senate race that if Booth Gardner was going to run for senate. And if he had, I would have, of course, worked with him. But after the primary, he didn't, I mean, I mean, at some point, he didn't go in and I went to Patty because I knew Patty. I attended Patty's garage sale where she sold her baby clothes so she could run to the, I don't know, it was a school board in the legislature. It was something, it was way back when. We all went to support Patty because we loved her. I mean, we just loved Patty. And so I was on Patty's campaign and I, of all the candidates I've ever worked for, I never personally saw anybody work as hard as Patty did. She was amazing. She just worked really, really hard. And she didn't have a great deal of credibility because she was a one-term senate, state senator. And she was running against a congressman, Rod Chandler, from the King County, you know, Puget Sound area. And so she wasn't given much. I think just, she just wasn't given, I mean, everybody, and the state was not as Democrat then as it was now. So I mean, Rod Chandler could have won. And he certainly had the backing of the money, the big money in the state because he was a congressman and he'd already been there and made those connections. Patty worked really hard and somehow somebody had said, you, you don't have a chance. You're just a mom in tennis shoes. Well, you don't think we ran with that? I mean, my goodness, of course, the mom in tennis shoes. In fact, I still have shoestrings that we gave out at, at parties and fundraisers that say, mom in tennis shoes, Patty Murray. It stuck, but women all over were running, Karen Mosley Brown, Barbara Boxer, Diane Feinstein. There were a lot of women running that year. Maria Cantwell ran for the Congress that year. So it was an amazing time for women and women were really getting excited about women candidates. And, and Patty won. I mean, and she just, but I think it was just through pure hard work. She never, she just never quit. And she was always so forthright. I mean, I always said about Booth Gardner and Patty, they were both the kind of person you could take your two-year-old to in the morning and say, here, keep this child for the day. And you would know when you went back in the evening, your child would not only be okay, but it would be happy. I mean, they were just those kind of solid, trustworthy people. And Patty has certainly personified that. So, yeah. So what year of the woman, but then Maria Cantwell lost her seat two years later. That was Clinton. And there was a change in the House and she lost it. And then she went on to private business. And then she ran for the United States Senate 2000 against Slade Gordon and won. So those, watching women in Washington State, we've had a lot in our legislature. We've had, we've had two women governors. This is a fairly progressive state as far as women are concerned.
Well, I love that story in part because it resonates with me as a young mom at the time, watching Patty Murray run for, run for Congress. That was, I think it was not unheard of, but it was almost unheard of until the year of the woman. I mean, women, there were women who did it earlier, like Jeanette Rankin. She was one of the few. And she was from Montana. But to see women enter into the political sphere was something that was very unusual. And so for, when I was a young mom, that was to see a mom in tennis shoes running for office. And representing me was something that I found really exciting and important. So I always knew about her. I never, I've never met her in person. I've always supported her, but she's done a lot of really good work. And it's the kind of work that I've seen other women like Maria Cantwell also do. Things that have to do with families and healthcare and really protecting the, the people of the state.
There, there were serious politicians. I mean, they are still serious politicians. They take their job seriously and they work very hard. And I mean, I'm a Democrat, so I agree with probably ninety percent of what they do. I, um, but uh, they've, they've represented our state with dignity. And uh, I, I like that. And when they're not embarrassing, they, I mean, there's nothing, you know, we can be very proud of them as people.
Right, right. Yeah. And that's, I think that that's, that's pretty wonderful. Um, so sorry to kind of take you back there. I also wanted to mention what you said about volunteers. Um, I think, um, I just would like to shout out to my volunteers on this campaign. So Elizabeth Campbell and Christopher Vintner have made phone calls every single week. Um, they, they are really consistent and I, and they don't stop. Um, and I really truly appreciate it. And then I have um, another, another person who I met a number of years ago with my granddaughter. Um, Yelena Keller has done some phone calls, but her daughter, who is fourteen years old, is making phone calls for me. So she's becoming engaged in politics right now. When I say politics, I had a conversation with Nan Hendrickson not too long ago. And I don't know if you saw that about women in political life. And one of the things that Nan talked about was, um, she would have preferred that we called the project Govern, uh, Women in Governance, um, because it isn't about the sort of um, associations that people have with politics, which are often negative. That it's about, you know, doing the things that you need to do to make your communities operate. And that's governance versus the sort of politics that we think about, which again, comes back to the national level, right? What we see on TV. So anyway, there, and there are a number of other people who um, I know are volunteering for me and I have some interns and I just so appreciate it because this is a very different campaign. Uh, I'm not out in going to house parties. Uh, we did have one really wonderful house party and then COVID nineteen hit. So uh, so this is my one-on-one house party right here. And we're doing our Zoom, our Zoom meetings and things like that. But, but it really is about putting your nose to the grindstone and doing work.
It's a challenge, isn't it? I mean, it's a real challenge. I've thought a lot about how a candidate campaigns without being able to go door-to-door and, and uh, that personal contact. It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's very challenging. And I think you've done a good job. I mean, I watched your campaign because you've been a friend for a long time and so supportive of me. But um, yeah, it's, it's, it's fun to watch people learn. And you have to learn on the job. There's no, I mean, you haven't had time to really um, think about this for a long. All of a sudden, you're in a campaign and now you can't do the things that we normally say you have to do. Like you can't doorbell those thousand houses or whatever. So. And I think doorbelling was one of the things I enjoyed the most about when I ran for city council. Cuz you never know who's gonna be on the other side of the door, what they're gonna say when they open the door and see you. I mean, it's like, I just, I thought it was just fun. I mean, uh, you know, nobody was ever mean to me really. I, most people, they may not have cared what I was saying, but most people were very, very kind. But without that personal contact, it's different. So good luck to you, Donna.
Oh, well, I, you know, I'm actually uh, doing that on the telephone and I'm finding, I was talking with Angela, who's my campaign manager earlier today, and I'm finding that um, I'm having really good conversations with people. And it's very rare that someone is rude to me. And when they are, that's, that's good. Do it quickly and I can move on to the person who wants to have a conversation. Um, and it not, they're not always people who agree with me. Uh, but they are people who want to talk and there are others who um, you know, share all kinds of things about what's happening in their lives. And so as someone who does interviewing for a living, I'm, I'm actually enjoying it. Now, I'm sure I'd be having even more fun if I was knocking on doors and getting to go out to meetings. But um, but it's actually pretty, it's pretty fun. Uh, I just have to, I have to pick up the telephone, which I didn't like. I don't like telephones, but I, but I'm learning to because I still, you can make human contact with people over the telephone. And so we're lucky to have that.
Oh, and we're lucky to have this. The technology is making a lot of this possible otherwise. But you know, in the olden days, when I first was in politics, everything was by mail. We had to mail everybody everything, you know? There really wasn't a lot of personal contact in a big campaign. Um, it was mail parties. We just mailed and mailed and mailed. And, and that, you do very little of that now.
Well, and I'm loving hearing the stories that people are sharing with me about the issues that are important to them and the, the problems with the, the way that state government operates from their perspective. You know, the very specific things that they have to deal with. And what excites me about going to the legislature is um, trying to do something about it. That's why I want to do this, to try to solve problems and um, you know, create a better community, um, better set of communities. Because as I said, this is, this district has a hundred and one thousand voters. And uh, I, I think of it like a horseshoe around Clark County, um, kind of. It's not exactly a horseshoe, but it's kind of like that. And they're very, very different groups of people. And um, but it's very special. Each of the communities has their own unique and special um, kind of personality. And just like Washougal does.
Well, and they all deserve equal representation from you. And I think that's something that a lot of um, politicians or people forget. You represent everybody and, and they need to know that you will be fair with them, whoever they are. And that gets tricky in this partisan time because we're all suspicious of, of people that aren't of our party. And, and so the trust to have in an elected official is hard won, I believe. And um, so I just, and it's contact that helps do that. And, and your good reputation, that makes a difference too, Donna.
Well, I appreciate that Joyce. And I appreciate um, learning about the kind of nonpartisan approach that you take. And I don't mean just in this conversation, but I talked with you several years ago when we met. And um, and it really was helpful for me to hear about your experience over the years in trying to bring about consensus, but also just in talking with people who don't agree with me. And um, and I, I have found over the past several years that I'm much more inclined to um, to listen to others than, than I certainly would have been four years ago. So this has been a wonderful experience for me, no matter the outcome, um, to actually hear what other people are saying. Cuz I really truly believe that we care about the same things, right? Our families, our work, um, how do we get meaning from our lives? Whether it's through um, through our religious orientations or through the work that we do. All of those things are the things that matter to all of us. So um, it's been really great. So I appreciate, I appreciate getting to meet you. I mean, what a, what a treat to get to know you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are we done?
Well, I'm gonna ask you uh, one more thing and then, and then we'll wrap up. And the, the question I have for you is, so if I, um, if I make it to the state legislature, which I intend to, um, what would you have me do?
Oh, that's, that's really very broad. Um, listen, just listen, because I worked the legislature for a couple of times with a friend of mine. And uh, so there's so much going on, so much of it matters. And it, it's all hard, as you probably have heard from various other people in the legislature. And I think you have to listen and learn and know because for every problem, there's probably a dozen answers and maybe none of them are right. And you know, uh, what is that saying? Just because we have opinions doesn't mean they're, they're right or they matter. And, and so there's so much wisdom there from all, all sides of it because it's, it's a big state. And um, I would say just listen and learn because you are a thinking person. You get it. You know, you would know how to, how to represent everybody. And, and it's always the balance of who, what is it? Do no harm, but try and find making our state more livable. And of course, there's big issues with schools, which you're familiar with. I mean, our education system right now is really a crucial time with, we don't even know if children should be back in the classroom, let alone how many kids are in a class. I mean, your kids get on a school. I, I don't know. There's, and I, I mean, there's a lot that's gonna be ahead of you and you have the experience with the school board to understand that at a deeper level than a lot of people would when they, they go in. So I wish you well. I really wish you well and I hope it all goes with it. I, I'd like to, I'd like to help you however I can.
Thank you so much Joyce. Thanks for doing this. And um, uh, yeah, I just really appreciate it. I'll go ahead and, and stop um, the recording.
I just wanna say I love talking about all this. I love it. So thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Oh, I love having you. I love having you talk about it. I got to talk with you to prepare for this and it's been really fun. And I hope people enjoy watching it and listening to you because that's just a teeny tiny bit of the wisdom that I know that you have to share.
Have a good day. Thank you.